I will call the January 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins?
Here.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller?
Here.
Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Welch?
Here.
Call for motion to approve the agenda. So moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Plates of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next section is A, Elections and Appointments of Officers. Call for motion with a nominee for election of Mayor. I'll move to approve, or John Hawkins.
Second.
Roll call.
McKinney?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot? Welch?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item two is a call for motion for nomination for election of Mayor pro tem.
I move to elect Brian Miller.
Second. I'll second it. And we'll roll call that.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
Yes.
Welch?
No.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Okay. Shall we do, you want to administer that oath for those?
Let's do Mayor first.
Yeah.
Just want to go right here.
If I'm going to repeat it.
You gotta repeat what I said. There you go. I, John Hawkins?
I, John Hawkins.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa?
Of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties?
Discharge all the duties.
Of Mayor?
Of Mayor.
For the term beginning January 2nd, 2018?
For the term beginning January 2nd, 2018.
For the city of Webster City?
For the city of Webster City.
Iowa?
Iowa.
As now or hereafter?
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
I, Brian Miller?
I, Brian Miller?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa?
Of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties?
Discharge all the duties.
Of Mayor pro tem?
Of Mayor pro tem.
For the term beginning January 2nd, 2018?
For the term beginning January 2nd, 2018.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa?
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter?
As now or hereafter.
Required by law?
Required by law.
So I'll ask if we, well. Ask if we want to take the first of the yearly appointments collectively or separately. But there might be some changes. In case you wanted to make some changes, we could go through and do that. And then we could still do them collectively. Four was appointment of the city manager by the city council for a two-year term. It's Daniel. Appointment of a representative, an alternative representative to the North Iowa Mississippi Electric Cooperative Association is Adam Dickinson is representative and Ken Wetslow is alternate. Appointment of a right-to-know coordinator is Brian Stroner. Appointment of a representative to the Greenbelt Advisory Commission is Kent Harfs. Appointment of the Hamilton County Communications Service Advisory Board, which is 911. This one, this says Mayor is automatically, but I was going to have Daniel should do that and he can nominate. Shiloh to be on the board, I believe, so, because he's been doing it anyway, so. That would be the only change there. And then appointment to the Hamilton County Resource Enhancement Committee is myself. And then appointment of a representative to the Hamilton County Emergency Management Board is Charles Standfield. And appointment of representative to, alternative representative to the Midas Transportation Advisory Committee is Kent Harfs representative and Matt Alcazar is alternate. Appointment of representative to serve on the Board of the Web City Daycare is Brian Miller. And appointment of representative to serve on the Board of the Riverview Early Childhood Center is Logan Welch. Do you want to move to?
Do them collectively.
I'll move to approve collectively.
Second. On number eight, is that Daniel then?
Yes.
Instead? That he would be the representative?
Yes, he would be the representative.
So is that still good with your motion?
And just for clarification, number eight is for the advisory, for the county's 911 Board. They help administer the, or manage the 911 funds that the county receives for dispatching. They use for equipment and capital purchases of the county's dispatch. Our chief of work, the police chief has been attending and serving as voting member, not the mayor, so.
No sense in changing what's working, so. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. That takes care of that one. No hurry, anyway. Item 14 is appointment of official newspaper. Obviously, Daily Tribune Journal. Call for motion?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. I ask if you want to take the first of the year resolutions collectively or separately. Fifteen is a resolution authorizing finance officer to invest city funds. Sixteen is a resolution authorizing city clerk to issue warrants in payment of certain types of expenditures. Seventeen is a resolution on authorizing city clerk to issue and deliver warrants for payroll upon receiving approval by the city manager. Eighteen is a resolution of purpose providing the expenditures of economic development funds. And nineteen is a resolution setting dates and time for meeting, for regular meetings with the city council for 2018. The call for a motion?
Move to approve collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Just for clarification, what was the time that was decided upon?
5:30.
We're leaving it at 5:30?
We're leaving it at 5:30.
Then you have to test.
Okay.
If something comes up that you need to change it, we can change the resolution outside of the first of the year, so.
Yeah, we can, you know, it's not, we can always change that if for some reason we get, you get a big enough conflict, we can. We can adjust things.
Will we vote on it?
Yes. Yeah, ayes, carry. B, Petition is, Petition is communications requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting. But may our city staff to research the matter, to have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anybody have any? You want to talk about?
I have one thing I'd like to bring up. I'd like to thank all the employees of Webster City Police, Fire, and Emergency Responders, also the county. And realize New Years and Christmas, they were busy on that. And I do want to compliment Pat Powers. I listened to him and he had gone out and talked to police, sheriff, hospital.
And the fire department.
And the fire department. And he had done that, I heard, the next day, so I wanted to compliment you on that. Had his recognition. I told a friend of mine that was working it, that happened and he was appreciative of it, so. Want to thank all the people that worked and also thank you for recognizing those folks.
Anyone else? Pretty quiet otherwise. C, Minutes and Claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have minutes. Item one is minutes of December 18, 2017. Item two is a resolution on payroll for a period ending December 23, 2017, and paid on December 29 of 2017. And three is a resolution on bills and the funds list. How would you like to?
I'll move to approve one, two, and three collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Next section is, is item D. First item on the agenda is a presentation by Williams and Company. Justin, I believe. Good evening. Thanks for coming.
Yep, thanks for having me. I'll make this pretty short. If there's any questions, you know, I'll do my best to answer them tonight. Otherwise, I'll have to go back to the office and look a few things up, you know, if I'm not able to answer it tonight and nobody has my contact information, so. So I welcome any questions. Just want to start out on page two of the audit report and state that, you know, we issued an unmodified opinion and that's noted in the very top paragraph on page two. That in all material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities that aggregate discreetly present component units in each major fund are fairly presented. So, and that's, that's what you want, is an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, so. Next move, just on to page four, starts the MDNA, Management Discussion Analysis. I won't spend any time in here, but this is just a narrative of the changes between FY17 and FY16. Would be something good to review, but again, I'm not going to spend any time in there. I then want to move to page 15, which is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. One thing that we look at for all our clients is how much unassigned fund balance in the general fund the entity has. And if you look on page 15 towards the bottom, under the general fund, you know, the unassigned fund balance is around $4.1 million. Well, you can then look at the operating expense for the year for the general fund, which is around $3.8 million. And it costs around $10 a day to operate the city based off some simple math, okay? The amount of unassigned fund balance of $4.1 million would basically operate the city for over a year. We normally like to see 90 to 120 days because that gets you in the time when you're going to get more property tax revenue. So the unassigned fund balance is large, strong, you know, however you want to define it. But there's, you know, that's a big number to have in your general fund, unassigned fund balance. It doesn't mean it's wrong. It's just that's a big number compared to other entities that we audit, so. Which, again, it's probably a good thing overall, but just something to think about when setting economic policy in the future potentially. On page 17, it shows the statements of revenues and expenditures for the governmental funds. The overall net change in fund balance for the governmental funds was, went down around $2.9 million. A lot of that was related to East Second Street and Brewer Creek Estates, the capital projects currently going on there. The general fund increased around $84,000. But again, overall, the, the change in fund balance decreased because of the capital projects going on during FY17. Then I'm going to move to page 20 and 21. This is a proprietary fund, so this, we're talking about your water, sewer, electric funds. The overall change in that position, it decreased around $188,000. The vast majority of that decrease is related to the electric fund. There was a building sold during FY17 that was in the electric fund. So there's a large loss on the disposition of that property being shown on the financial statements, which is not normal. I mean, it's, it's not a typical transaction that the city is involved with every year. But that's, that accounts for the big decrease in the business-type activities for the year. Otherwise, the water system increased $170,000. The sewer system increased $470,000. And the operating income, the operating income for the electric system, so this is going to be before the loss shown on that property or any other financing sources, was actually a increase, or an income of $1 million, just over a million dollars. So, again, the electric system does well for Webster City, you know, and it creates some resources that allows you guys to do some different projects and so forth, so. Then starting on page 28 is a note of financial statements. This just provides additional detail of the numbers on the financial statements. It also talks about the accounting policies that the city follows. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on there. I do want to just point out on note seven. This, this is a good note to review, I would say, just because it talks about the long-term debt that's outstanding as of the end, end of the year for the city. You know, again, there's, there's nothing wrong from, from our standpoint, but it just shows you the picture in, in the, the amount of debt and the repayment schedules for, for that debt, so. Then starting on page 59 and 60 is, this is a budget to actual, is what we call it. So this is just going to show the budgeted expenses and revenue compared to actual. Again, it's probably something just to review at some point if you haven't already. Take a look at and see, you know, how the functions played out for the year and so forth, so. Then I want to jump to page 88. One thing that was different this year for, for the audit was that the city of Webster City was subject to a single audit. And what that means is that when a governmental entity spends more than $750,000 of federal funding, then they're subject to a single audit, which means we got to come in and basically audit programs or that, that funding to make sure that it was in compliance with the grantor and it's spent appropriately. And there's other things that we look at as well, but. So this year with some of the transactions with the USDA, there was some loans made to like the medical clinic here in town and so forth. But that, that triggered a, a single audit this year. You know, and as a result of that single audit, we didn't have any findings to, to report related to the single audit portion of that. You know, we have an unmodified opinion was issued on the compliance for each of the major programs that we audited. And there were two major programs we audited. And that was, again, the rural economic development loans, which were the transactions through USDA. And then the highway planning and construction, which was some funding for, it might have been East Second Street, don't quote me on that. One, one of the road projects currently underway at Webster City. We also, we did note material weakness in internal control or financial reporting. And we've had this in years past. When we audit, we're looking for perfection. So it's, it's a very hard standard to obtain. And so if we have to propose adjustments to the numbers to the city, then we feel like, hey, there's a material weakness and internal control finding that we disclose in, in the audit report. Again, it's, it's, it's very hard to, to, in our opinion, to get out of that unless you're perfect and we don't propose any adjustments or the adjustments we propose are very small. So we did have a material weakness, again, that, that we've had in years, years past as well, so. Otherwise, that's all I have. Any questions? Over anything?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good report.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 1A is a motion accept, yeah, motion accepting and placing on file for the 2016-17 City of Webster City audit.
Move to approve, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item two is a presentation by the representative for Hamilton County Animal Advocates Organization on their TNR program. Monica?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let me.
Pass it now.
Yes.
Sure.
They should have pointed you there. Thank you. Okay. Thanks for having me. My name's Monica Becker. I'm with Hamilton County Animal Advocates. I grew up in Webster City. I now live in Stratford. I'm one of the owners of Stratford Gravel. Hamilton County Animal Advocates was formed in May of this year, were licensed, incorporated, and were a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The other two board members are Kim Anderson, the Hamilton County reporter, she lives in Stratford, and then also Tina Poland, who owns Salon Maraki here in town. There is not another animal welfare organization in Hamilton County. So we started to address a need primarily because we were made aware, aware of some citizens that have started feeding stray cats and too quickly become 20. So in order to help them, we wanted to officially have an organization that we could raise money through donations and then also grants. And then also to actually adopt out and rehome animals, you have to be licensed with the State of Iowa to do that. So what we're here tonight to ask is for permission from the city council to do like a TNR pilot program in Webster City. TNR stands for trap, neuter, return. It's also sometimes called TNVR, which is trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return. And it's for community cats. The definition of a community cat can be either feral or stray. A stray cat is usually one that is somewhat socialized to people, had maybe been owned at one time and, you know, they just turned it out or it got lost. A commu-, or a feral cat is one that is not socialized to people. So it cannot be placed into a home. It's basically wild. Community cats in general are those that are not necessarily owned, but are pre-roaming. And, and somebody is typically taking care of them. So those are just some basic definitions. In your packet here, I just kind of put together some information that you can read through. Gives you some information on TNR, but this first page, and I did not prepare one specifically for Webster City, but this is what we did in Stratford recently. We received approval in October from the Stratford City Council to do TNR in Stratford. When I say approval, we're not asking for any ordinance changes at this point. We just, we just want to be able to tell the community that it's okay that we're doing TNR for reasons that that allows me to apply for grants to pay for it. That allows us to publicize it. And then it also allows community members to come forward. What happened, we started working with a person in Stratford who had, boy, I don't even remember, 20-plus cats. Again, started with a couple and ended up with, with many. And we were doing that before we went before the city council. And Stratford has a scene ordinances. Cats are not supposed to be running loose. The city manager knew what we were doing. We were just trying to help. So we, we were able to get all of his cats fixed and in the process, we removed 10 kittens and rehomed them. Spade neutered them, vaccinated them, microchipped them, and rehomed them. So then we finally went before the city council and they unanimously gave the okay for us to do TNR. One of the things that had also happened is another gentleman who heard we were doing this approached me. He's feeding cats in Stratford. He wanted me to trap them and take them away. And I didn't have, I didn't have a way to do that. These are not cats that can be adopted. I, I explained to him that we could trap them, get them fixed, and bring them back because he's feeding them and taking care of them anyway. He didn't want to do that because he didn't want to get in trouble with the city. So these cats are still out there and they're still not fixed. I've since talked to him and he's willing to let us start doing TNR now. We'll plan to start doing that in March with his cats. But, so this is kind of a summary of our Stratford Cat Initiative. No cost to the city. You know, we do it through donations, fundraising, grants. We don't just go out and randomly set traps. We work with people who know their cats. They have a list of their cats. We work with them. We set the traps on their property with permission. We take the cats into the vet clinic the next day. They get fixed. They get vaccinated for rabies and distemper. They get a microchip. And then they also get an ear tip, which is on their left ear, the, the vet, under anesthesia, removes the top third of their ear so that they can be identified later. And that is invaluable because the last time I trapped cats in Stratford, I had three that I, I can't tell. Some of them, you can't tell apart. And the only reason I knew we'd already taken them is because they had an ear tip. So this red part under the Stratford Cat Initiative was kind of the most recent update in December of what we've done there so far. And all of it was paid for donations and then we also received a grant to do that. And we're continuing to do that in Stratford to do TNR. So kind of in the rest of this packet, one of the biggest questions that comes up is rabies. Rabies is a concern. Some of the information here, there's information from the state on animal rabies in Iowa. It shows what the cats that they tested, how many have tested positive in the last 10 years. There was one in 2016. On the back of that page, the most recent human rabies case occurred in 2012. And the one prior to that in Iowa was in 1951. Absolutely pets need to be vaccinated for rabies, but it's not, it's, it's, it's not an epidemic. It's not a huge concern. Also in that packet, I just took a page out of the Journal of American Vet Medical Association. It was some studies done by the American Vet Medical Association. And down in orange there, they say ideally, ideally, cats will be recaptured and revaccinated on a regular schedule. However, the vaccinations are shown to be effective for between three and seven years if you only vaccinate them once. So in all honesty, we don't have the resources to go back and re-trap cats and vaccinate them every year. We don't have the financial resources or the time. And it also, from the vet's standpoint, when the cats are feral, it's one thing to vaccinate them when they're under anesthesia. It's another thing to try to vaccinate them when they're not. So, you know, that will not be part of our, part of our program. I just want to, you know, make sure that that's clear. Also in the packet is some information from the American Bar Association, which this summer, they recommend now that city governments allow for TNR within their ordinances because it's been shown to be effective and it's been shown to be cost savings to the community. If you read through that, all of that information, towards the end, they cite some sources that talk about rabies again. The last known human or cat to human rabies transmission in the United States was in the 1960s. It's not a common occurrence. And with rabies, with, with animal control, and I, for three years, I was the director of the animal shelter in Oskaloosa and I was responsible for animal control in Mahaska County. Anytime there is a bite by a dog or cat, whether that animal is vaccinated or not, it has to be confined for a period of 10 days. If it does not get sick within that 10 days, then it was not contagious for rabies. Because like any vaccination, they're not 100% effective. So with rabies, it's the same thing that you would be doing now. If somebody's bitten by a cat that has rabies, feral or not, they need to be trapped and confined for a period of 10 days or euthanized and tested. Or if that's not possible, then the person needs to undergo the shots to make sure they don't get it. So that doesn't change with TNR. Just a couple other things here. There's some information from the Humane Society of the United States as far as their stance on cats and TNR. They're supportive of TNR. The SPCA is supportive of TNR. More and more animal control agencies across the country are going to TNR because the option the options are to trap the cats and euthanize them. Feral cats are not adoptable. If a feral cat is taken by somebody well-meaning into a shelter, they have about 100% chance of euthanasia. And even removing them, which shelters have been trying to do for years, the population doesn't come down. The only way that it's been shown to be effective is to implement TNR as part of the policy. Now, it's not a perfect solution. A lot of people don't like having stray cats running around. You have to really be effective. You have to get them all. The goal of TNR is to gradually reduce the population. It's been shown to be effective in several instances. And then also, we try to remove kittens that are still young enough to be tamed and put them up for adoption. I guess coming back to, we would just like to ask your permission to do it or to try it to publicize what we're doing, to identify some caregivers, find out how many cats they have, and start trapping them and then come back to you and report maybe in six months, you know, what's happened so far. We work with the Webster City Vet Clinic, and then we also work with an organization called Animal Protection and Education, which is a low-cost spay-neuter clinic based in Ogden. And I don't want to bore you with a lot more information. But any questions or?
Well, I think the question we need to figure out is the TNR program, it relies on volunteers in the community within the pilot program or in a neighborhood to care for cats that aren't theirs in one way, shape, or form. Feed them.
Yes.
Tend to them. And correct me if I'm wrong, but our animal ordinance does not allow that.
Correct.
Correct. And that's really what we're looking at here is a variance or a blessing to allow people to do that in certain areas to try this pilot program. I know that was a wall we hit. I met with Monica and Tina about three weeks went out. And I didn't have a good answer for you on that, if our ordinance has a way around that or if we can grant a variance.
Well, I don't think there's a way around the ordinance, as we say, but I mean, obviously, we don't have an animal control, so we're not actively going around searching out people that are feeding.
Well, I think one thing will happen is, again, if this group is advertising their service or their pilot program, it will bring out people against this, and there'll be reporting done. That reporting happens. We're going to run into the same issue we did with the sign ordinance. As soon as people start pointing out outliers of the ordinance, we'll have to start acting unless there's something we can do to work with them, whether it be a variance or something. And that's what I'm asking.
Not yet. No, I haven't. I haven't received any complaints about it. Some of the statistics show that 80% of people are in favor of TNR versus trapping them and euthanizing them, when that's the other option. So to answer your question, no, we have not run into that yet. Generally, people are supportive of it.
Right. I was meaning like their ordinances. Their ordinance have the same, set up the same as ours.
We have the same city term.
Yeah, they don't have the same, no. Their animal ordinance is, we updated ours, they didn't update theirs. So there's more like what ours used to be like prior to.
Theirs is similar in that it has the same. Animals are not allowed to run at large.
Right. That's the law, at large. Ours talks about just the pure feeding aspect of it. You cannot, you're not just feed or water a feral cat. And the idea was, when, at least when it was passed in 2015, was that there was issues with people in the community that were just feeding a bunch of cats, and then the neighbors were complaining that it was bringing in cats that were, you know, using the children's sandbox for a restroom, as you can imagine. There were those complaints that came in, and that's why it was implemented. So there's not really a way to waive that because it's a violation. I mean, so if someone said, you're not, you know, the city's not listening to my complaints, do they have every right to file their own violation? I mean, they can, they have every right. People file complaints all the time, so.
So.
The idea is if you're asking that the city allows people to feed feral cats, then you're going to change the ordinance.
Right. So there is no variance to it. It'd have to be a complete wording change.
Just on that.
Right.
You could take that portion out, but again, the same issue is going to arise, like you just said, is people are going to say, now you're letting my neighbor feed his cats again.
Right, and that's why I, you know, I encourage Hamilton County Advocates to come speak to us tonight because even if we were to allow this kind of behind the scenes, I would fear there'd be that neighbor that wants to call the city and would ruin it for everybody in a sense, as well as educate other members of council that didn't refer to the information that was given to me a few weeks ago, so. I guess maybe we could start with, is that something we want to see happen in Webster City?
I have a comment or question I'd like to ask perhaps.
Sure.
When I responded back on it, Monica, I've been, obviously, it'll be 10 years I've been retired, and I worked at a corporation down in Perry for quite a few years and drove back and forth. And they started this trap and neuter program at that time.
Perry has one, yes.
Yeah, and I don't know if you've talked to them, but my understanding is talking to the people in the community, the areas that they had the greater amount of cat problems, the feral cats, was they had a lot of abandoned trailers, trailer ports, old houses and things like that because, I mean, either they were dropped off and if somebody abandoned a trailer or they, you know, I don't know what their reproductive rate is for a cat, but it seems to be pretty high.
It can have three litters a year and they can get pregnant as young as four to five months.
And they have worked on that program, and from a personal point of view, I think it's a good program myself. But I can honestly say I have a cat-free zone because I've got a dog, and she keeps the backyard pretty well taken care of. But I don't know if some neighborhoods, and this is a question I have to the other council people and other folks, they don't see feral cats in our neighborhood as much as, you know, Tinkerbell with a collar on. And there was only one or two of those. Is there something in Webster City, maybe Kenner Chief would know, where we have a real problem in Webster City with them or isolated areas?
I asked a child earlier or earlier last week about it, and so some of the info he got for me was, he said in 2017, there was only 35 calls to the police department that involved cats. Ten of those being strays reported.
I remember when we read at the animal ordinance, it was quite the topic of feral cats. And in fact, the TNR program was brought up by Angela Rutter. And, you know, looking back two or three years now of that animal ordinance, do we still have a feral cat issue? I don't know. Again, I don't see it in my neighborhood either, June, you know. I'm sure it's there, though.
Well, I guess I would personally like to see on a pilot program trying something like this, but I think we would have to use the resource of the police and the line people, the fire department, you know, they're out in the community and they see where these are. And I can't say it's in, you know, more, you know, abandoned areas. You know, I just don't know where feral cats are.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, I mean.
What's the, I have a question regarding the ordinance that you could, Monica, probably answer, is when you say you want people to be able to feed them, is that just purely to get them into the trap or as in to accumulate a number of cats in one area and trap, be more effective with the trap? Because, I mean, there are people that put live traps out for anything and they'll catch a cat. I mean, it seems to be the first thing you can catch in a live trap is a cat.
Right. The goal of TNR is for those people that are already doing it. It's not necessarily to encourage more people to start feeding cats, but we know what happens. We've had people communicate with us that, I guess, kind of telling on other people that are feeding cats and that, you know, yes, there are a lot of cats around here, and if you could do something, that would be great. Unfortunately, Tina's been in contact with most of those people. She had a family emergency today. That's why she couldn't be here tonight. And quite honestly, it's something that we have not yet really reached out to ask people about because we know kind of legally we can't right now in Webster City. So kind of what I'm hearing is that in different places, there are cat issues. But I can't, I can't define that for you, but I guess to answer your question, it's generally for people that are already doing it.
And that was my question is, we're not encouraging anybody. We're not saying, I mean, you're going to have cats in an area most likely because somebody is feeding them.
Right.
It doesn't, they understand. I mean, granted, they're everywhere probably, but I mean, they roam, I'm sure, but I don't know if they're necessarily need for an ordinance change or if it's just the people are made aware that through this TNR program, although it's, they shouldn't be feeding cats, I mean, you're probably right that that's where you're going to go is the place where somebody's feeding, because that's where the accumulation of the cats are.
Well, if we're looking at Perry's example, Perry does specifically prohibit individuals from feeding feral cats. They didn't take that.
Have you talked to folks in Perry?
I'm looking at their ordinance.
But isn't there some, and I guess I haven't looked at it, but isn't there something that, oftentimes what happens is they kind of leave the ordinance alone, but then they, there's something that's added as an exception if you're, you know, working under a TNR program.
Yeah, and I think that's what you're probably referring to is they've outlined a managed program through, I think it's the Humane Society. They're in Perry. And so, but they still specifically prohibit the feeding of feral cats or wild animals.
I think you're looking at a difference when you're talking about baiting a trap to catch cats in order to do that versus saying it's, we're just going to turn and look the other way on someone who's feeding 15 or 20 cats in their neighborhood.
It depends on how you bait the trap because also in Webster City, there's a lot of raccoons running around, a lot of tosses, so if you set a cat trap.
But unfortunately, when you're trying to catch a raccoon, you're usually not catching a cat.
What's that? Actually, with kittens, sometimes the laser works seriously.
I don't think you're talking baiting a trap, though, right? I mean, because the R and the TNR is the important part here. You return the cat to the area.
Right.
But you have to capture it first, yeah.
But the thing is, it's not baiting a trap. I mean, you're technically still, in a way, feeding them after they return. It may or may not. I don't know. Maybe you can explain that better, Monica, because there's more to it than just trapping the cat. The cat returns to the area.
Right. These are, these are locations where the cats are being cared for. And oftentimes, if you ask the person caring for them, they'll say, well, they're not really my cats, but they showed up and I called the vet clinic and they didn't have room for them, or I didn't know what else to do with them, and they can't afford to get them fixed, or they think they can't afford to get them fixed, which is the same thing. So they're already feeding them. They're already taking care of them. TNR just, we trap them, fix them, and return them, and they continue to be cared for. It's just now they're not reproducing.
So if we allow the TNR, but we're not going to change the ordinance to change it? You know, so whatever the cat, however the cat is surviving now, they can keep surviving, and we'll allow the TNR to happen and.
As long as you're not advertising, please feed the cats and let us know where you're feeding them.
No.
I don't see the issue.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
We're eliminating a problem that we don't want by letting them do what they want to do.
Because, I mean, the TNR thing is obviously is going to help because at the moment, we don't do anything. I mean, occasionally, we have a problem with a cat, and if we do, we end up catching it and.
I guess we have to consciously be willing to not enforce somebody calling that in if it's part of the TNR program. That's what we have to consciously be prepared to do. It's one thing to say, yeah, go for it. It's fine, but when somebody calls in their neighbor for feeding their cats and they're tied to the TNR program, we have to consciously not enforce that word to the ordinance. And how do we do that?
I don't think you can if you have more rights.
You can. And that's why my question to Monica was is, if you're baiting them, that's one thing. To get them to be trapped, you put food in your trap. If you're knowingly feeding cats and you're encouraging them to be fed, then you're in violation of the ordinance. So like Perry, they have the TNR program and they still prohibit feeding, so if you put a trap out and you catch a cat and you return it, as long as nobody's feeding, I mean, you said, if they're surviving now, they're, so I don't think we're.
Obviously, it's being done right now.
Well, cats, cats will survive a lot of the time. I mean, until you get weather like we're getting, I ask, I mean, a lot of the time, they'll survive on whatever's around. I mean, there's one thing about a cat. It's not like a dog. It doesn't have to be there all the time. It manages to find something.
The thing is, I'll be eating a lot of roams anyway, and it doesn't rule.
That's why our rabbit population is probably not as big as it was.
I've got a separate question. So you, to me, you've kind of got feral cats and you've got community cats, whatever you want to call them, or someone's feeding them. They're fairly tame, maybe afraid of people, but they're not feral cats, so to speak. Is there anybody doing a combination where, to me, a feral cat is a menace to the area even when you release them? Because they, my grandmother used to feed cats. And they were constantly having cat fights with those cats that maybe weren't domesticated, community, whatever you want to call them. And cats were getting injured. They'd find dead cats. It could have been community cats fighting, but to me, the feral cats being released back into the community, is there anyone doing it where they euthanize those?
Ferals.
The feral cats.
That's what shelters have done for years, and it doesn't affect the population.
I mean, doing a combination of the two. I get where you're doing the spay or neuter, but if it's a feral cat, what's the purpose of releasing it back into the?
She's not willing to do that part.
Right. There is, well, and there also is, you know, if you read through some of the literature, there's what's called a vacuum effect. If you, the cats will stabilize the population. If you start removing them, more will come in. And more out of the litter will survive when they're born because there's, the resources are still there. There's a reason that they're there. So some of what you're talking about with the biting, and again, you know, if you read through some of that, a lot of that is minimized or eliminated when they're fixed because the hormones go away. They're not, the males are not fighting over the females. A lot of the negative behavior with cats comes from mating. And you fix them and you take that away. So, you know, that's, so feral cats, I think it might be surprising at the number of feral cats that are out there. You just don't see them because they're afraid of people. So they're hiding and they're sneaking up and getting food from someplace. But they're there. Now, you know, going back to the ordinance, and I've looked at, it's been a while since I looked at Perry's ordinance, and that was written quite a while ago, and I'll just be honest, I don't like the way it was written. There's a lot that's been done to improve ordinances since then. And I didn't do a bunch of research before coming here tonight as far as what some of those options might be, but I certainly could. I could certainly find an ordinance or somehow that an ordinance was modified that might make this work.
I think, just speaking for myself, I'd be open to that. I mean, if you find a way that we can make it happen, I don't think anybody's against it. We just want to find a way to make it legal.
So at what point, because I asked you the question about custody and what the state law defines as abandonment of cats and dogs, and it references ownership or custody of a cat or dog. So at what point is feeding considered now custody of an animal?
Right. And we talked about that. Currently, state code says that you cannot essentially abandon a cat that is now in your custody, and the whole question is, I think your question was if you're feeding and/or taking a cat into the vet to have it spayed and neutered, are you then taking custody of it? I don't, I don't see it as an issue. It's meant for people that are taking a cat inside, living with it for a year, decide they don't want the cat anymore, they throw it outside. That's more of the issue, which you probably see is people are, they get over it and then they toss it. That's, they put that in place so that people weren't just tossing their cat or dog out, you know.
So the return part goes away because it's, they don't really.
And same thing with the feeding. A lot of people are saying, I don't have custody of the cat. I go, I don't want to take it inside. I just feed it because I feel bad. And that's where our ordinance kicks in, is we can't do that. State code-wise, yeah. I don't think that's an issue with you guys at all because you're not taking possession. You're not wanting to keep it.
Well, in part of the custody state law, it was to prevent people from trapping cats in town and just taking them out in the country and dumping them. You know, you can release a cat to someone else who accepts responsibility for its care, which, you know, means, I mean, you can legally trap a cat and take it out and if a farmer agrees to take custody, or, you know, accept responsibility for it, release it in their barn. You can do that. You just can't take custody of it and just take it out and dump it somewhere, basically, from a humane standpoint.
They haven't heard the stories of cats going hundreds of miles and coming back home?
Yes. That does happen.
In fact, I think the feral cats in Australia roam, you know, it's some phenomenal, it's more than 100 mile in a couple of days, the areas that they cover, but that's completely, that's a feral in the bush cat. It's not a. um, in a, in a couple of days, the, the areas that they cover, but, but that's completely, that's a feral in the bush cat, it's not a a city cat.
Jim, I did wanna make one, you talked about where are they at? We get a lot of messages, the three of us, you know, can you help, we've got this cat problem, and I think the areas I remember in Webster City are Bank Street, Elm Street, and Third Street are the ones that I remember complaints on.
Yeah, some of the, some of the houses we have problems with, probably.
So.
And that, is that, uh, around some of the abandoned houses and?
Yes.
Elm Street was, Elm Street was. There was one where that house, nine forty-five Elm.
The one we took.
Where the one that, and we had, finally took down it, they said when they were taking it down.
And they passed. And the other house that we have, that we've got problems with, um, um, is that Elm or Cedar?
Elm as well, yeah.
That one's, that one's got cats coming and going out.
And that kind of tied into the experience I heard about Perry, you know, a lot of theirs was the old abandoned trailers and things like that, and, uh, I guess personally, I would like to see us try to move this and do something. And I think the one, uh, opportunity we have with Pat and, um, the newspaper is, once this comes out, people could call the city and say, you know, we do see these. And I mean, I'm looking at it from an isolated point of view, because, you know, I just don't see them, and I don't know about the rest of the folks.
What do you think, Daniel, is it, I think it's kind of both of, um?
Yeah, I think initially, I mean, if all they wanna do is just a blessing to kind of start forward with, you know, starting dust, and I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't know that there is a need to amend the ordinance right now, and so, I mean, we're not trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist right now, maybe we just wait to see how that works out, and then amend it accordingly.
We, we didn't get pressure from the, if you start getting a lot of pressure from people, then we'll have to go and open the ordinance up.
Yeah, cause it seems like, at least the examples you gave with, with Perry and Panora, I mean, both of them are.
You look like you wanna say something on that, though. Could, it, what you're saying is, we should move forward without amending the ordinance? But if someone, but what if someone were to call people out on that? Then we, we'd be changing the ordinance retroactively?
No, you wouldn't.
Okay, so, so then we run into that, that, the, the fear of that possibly happening. And I, 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 I think that the consensus is, we wanna see the, the TNR program at least piloted in Webster City. So let's make it so that's legal. You know, let's not just kind of wait and see and hope no one says something.
Well, you can't make it legal without changing the ordinance.
Then let's do that, you know, that's, that's the path we have to go to make it legal.
That can, that can take six months before the pilot program can even start.
I'm with you on that, they, they reproduce so fast, you know, I, you know, I mean, I.
I just don't, I just don't see.
Cause it's, it's gonna take a while.
I'm not trying to be by the book, but I mean, it's and I think that's gonna open up to scrutiny, scrutiny, and you might see some pushback from the community, and then they're, they're gonna ask us to enforce our ordinance.
But I, I guess, uh, the example she gave uh, exactly mirror what we're doing now, in that it specifically says it doesn't allow for feeding of feral cats.
Right.
Now, Panora's example differs a little bit in that it, it says, uh, under a maintained, maintained feral cat colony or a TNR program, they're allowed to do that. So you don't take away that prohibition of feeding feral cats, provided that if you're working with a property owner, and they're working under your program, then that could be acceptable.
But that's not in our ordinance currently.
I, I think the problem you're gonna run into is, when does that end?
Right.
I mean, that, that's, I guess, I mean, that's the confusion that I'm still struggling with this whole idea is, is, right now, your concern is that a neighbor is gonna call in when they show up and say that they're feeding cats, or, I mean, they're, if they already are feeding cats, the neighbor's probably more upset that they've been feeding them and not trapping and releasing them.
Well, I'll, I'll take a back step. I am a hundred percent for the TNR program in Webster City. I just wanna make sure that there's no way anybody that's a volunteer for that program, or, or a, or a well-meaning citizen can be somehow called out upon in our current ordinance. I don't want anyone to see, I don't see anyone get punished for working in this program. If our ordinance currently doesn't say, we allow a TNR program, then that, that possibility arises, right?
Right, and, and I think, as long as you say, Ms. Perry, if you allow a TNR program, but you still say you're prohibited from feeding cats, the whole idea is, is you still don't want your neighbor feeding cats, even once these cats are neutered, there's, if they're still feeding them, you're still having issue, because now you've, you're still feeding the cats, the cats are still using the litter box, the neighbor's sandbox is a litter box, they're still roaming around. So the idea is, if you're feeding them to trap them, and then once they're trapped, no one's feeding them anymore, uh, then, you know, by putting a can of tuna or whatever in the, in the trap, then that's not an issue. If you're wanting to allow cats to be continued to be allowed to be fed, then you're still gonna run into the issue where neighbors are gonna complain, because yeah, they're spayed and neutered, but they're still cats, they're still using the bathroom, they're still roaming around, they're still killing off their bird population, which people were complaining about with, uh.
I understand how cats work, but, what, what I'm getting at is, is can we move forward with this, and no one has to face the city ordinance?
Has, has the program worked in Perry and Panora? Has the ordinance just written now?
It's, it's, they've been doing it, yes, I mean, I, I know they continue to do it, I, I have not talked to the directors of those organizations specifically to find out, um, you know, what's happened with that. Um, I do know, and again, I don't know the specifics on this, the Boone City Council in November gave permission to the Boone Area Humane Society to do TNR. Now, I don't know if they're doing that as changing their ordinance, or if they're doing that as, you know, giving permission to try it, I could certainly, I know the director in Boone, I just haven't had a chance to talk to her, but I could find out more there, too.
Let me ask you this too, Monica, like, a pilot program, like roughly, would, would you just pick like one area that's seven issues with cats, and kind of try to focus on that one known location? And just see how, how it does in, in like a, a, a season or two, and then go widespread with it, or?
Yeah, so we, what we would do is, you know, we would open it up, um, I guess to have people contact us, and, and part of it is, you know, when you talk about feeding them, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do it unless we know they're gonna be fed when they go back. I mean, that's, you know, part of the, part of the returning, and somebody's caring for them, but we would just reach out to the community and, and see who contacts us. There is some responsibility on the part of the caregiver as well. They have to let us know how many cats we have. TNR is not effective unless you can go into an area and get the majority of the cats, because if, if there are ten cats and you go in and trap two, well, that, that's not gonna be effective. So, um, I think the first step would be to, you know, see who contacts us, and, and see who's willing to actually participate in, in it as a program. Provide us that information, work with us on getting them trapped, getting them in, to get them, get them fixed. And yes, you know, do it in one or two areas to start, and see how it goes.
So what do you do if you, if, if I call you and say, my wife's feeding cats? Um, we have five cats, you'll come get them, I don't want them back, what do you do then?
We can't help you. I, I mean, quite honestly, we, we can't, there, there is, there is a possibility for some relocation, if we can find barns that are, are willing to do that, farmers that are willing to do that. I don't like to do that, um, and most TNR programs do not like to do that, it's not as easy as it sounds. In order for that to be successful, those cats have to be confined for a minimum of three weeks wherever they're going, so they can acclimate themselves to the sounds, the smells, whoever's feeding them, um, it's actually, and even then, it's not always successful, which then becomes inhumane, because you're taking a cat who knows its neighborhood, um, you know, for instance, it knows how to survive in the city of Webster City. You move it out to the country, I mean, it doesn't have to deal really with coyotes in the city, it has to deal with cars. You take it out to the country, and it, it doesn't know how to survive out there. So, um, there is a possibility, and we did a little bit of that in a situation where we had to. Um, but that's definitely not my preference.
And I think that's where we run into an ordinance issue.
Right.
Let me ask you this question, example, so, next door neighbor's abandoned house, let's say, and I, the cats are going in and out, and I say, call you and I say, put the traps in my yard, I don't feed them, I don't wanna feed them, but they're hanging around the area. Do you guys do that, or is it only when the person who's feeding them calls you? Because if, if I say, put the traps in my yard, catch them, release them back, I don't care. I just, you know, is that what you guys focus on, or is it only when somebody's feeding them and then caring for them afterwards?
We need to know that somebody is going to be taking care of them afterwards, because otherwise, what you're talking about, and what we need to be a little bit careful of is, we're not gonna become animal control for Webster City. And what you're talking about is, is a kind of a separate issue that, that is more than what we can handle. Um, so, so ours would be more of a location that they are being fed by somebody.
So at the moment, if nobody's, if nobody's making calls and complaining about somebody feeding the cats right now, then I don't see why that would change, because the TNR is coming, coming along.
Oh, the, the only issue is you're advertising it, I mean, that's, that's the real issue.
Exactly, we're advertising it, which means that.
And then it becomes the neighbors rolling, and then they blank.
But, I mean, unfortunately, there's a good and bad, it's.
Right. And I think, and I think maybe that's Perry's, what Perry was getting at is, is they're saying, we don't want you feeding cats, but the situation arises again where your neighbor's abandoned or whatnot in that house, and they're coming and trapping them, and then releasing them. But again, it's through the humane side, it's not through, you know, an advocate five oh one C three, so I think there, there's a little bit of a difference there, they're, they're probably acting more so like you said, like the humane side, where they're going in, trapping them, releasing them, and then hoping they just don't reproduce.
Uh, they would, they would be doing, they would be operating the same way, they, they would be
They're going after the people.
Working with the caregiver, they're not gonna go set traps at a location just because there are a whole bunch of stray cats, unless they have permission from the property and, and know that somebody's taking care of them, that's, that's just part of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how their, their ordinance would work, I think, you're essentially talking out both sides of your mouth, you're saying you can't feed them, but if you do feed them, then as long as you're doing trap and release, we don't, I mean.
And that's why, I, I've looked at those ordinances before, both Perry and Panora, I did not hear recently, but when I looked at them previously, there are definitely things I don't like about them. I mean, they're, and they were, those have been in place for a long time, things have changed quite a bit since then. I, I wouldn't use those necessarily as models.
Cause I think Panora's talks about a community cats.
Yeah.
They're like a colony of community cats, and what that entails, it's different than, and I think he said, I don't even wanna touch that, cause it's, it's a mess, I mean. Because again, you're talking out both sides of your mouth, you're saying, you can't feed them feral cats, but if you are, as long as you're playing the trap and release, again, where does it end, like, do you guys leave, are you still in the program, or are you still feeding the cat that shows up that doesn't have its ears snipped, I mean, it's the issue you're running into, I think.
So when you started, you said you didn't wanna change the code, so is that different now? I mean, do you want to change the code, or?
I, I guess, what, what I came to ask is if we could have the okay to try this as a pilot program without having to go in and change the code to make it work. Um, maybe that's not feasible in Webster City. Um, and, and the reason for that is, I, I personally, I, I don't believe in, in making laws if they're not gonna be enforced, um, or if things are gonna be kind of loose anyway. Um, and, and maybe, maybe it's something that you just kind of happens, and it's not a big deal, I think, if it's something that grows at all, if we do get quite a response, then I think it would be worthwhile to look at the ordinance. Um, but from an initial standpoint, maybe just put it out there and see what happens, and the reason we could just do this behind the scenes, there's, there's, I mean, there's no reason that, quite honestly, we couldn't. Um, except that having this, I, I'm not gonna publicize it in the paper, I'm not gonna ask for donations, and I can't apply for grants really otherwise. And that's what helps fund what we do, so.
No, I think you got it better, why, yeah, it's better.
Well, I think, in a way, we've got a baseline, because Daniel referenced, the police chief said you had thirty-three calls was last year, I mean, seventeen.
Yeah, thirty-five, but I imagine after this hits the press tomorrow or this week, the calls are gonna go up, this week alone.
Look at, but I mean, let's just, you know, I mean, I guess, I'm kind of looking, let's do a pilot, see what happens, and find out where these calls go up. And if we get an increased number of calls, and we know there's a problem out there, but it has not been identified, or people just have given up and become complacent towards that.
Did you wanna, um, tie it up then until the next meeting and see what, I mean, what the impact is from, from the media?
Well, I, I think right now, though, John, we got a, kind of a baseline from what, uh, Daniel said, the police said, and I guess maybe.
We still have the same problem, if we okay this, then we have the problem like Logan said, is then, what are we gonna do when someone comes in and says, I've got a seven hundred and fifty dollar.
Your proposal makes sense.
Well, it's only, it'd only be a fifty dollar.
Fifty dollar.
First time offense, and I can tell you, this is basically, we've never, in all, since we've implemented this ordinance, I've only dealt with dogs at court, so uh, we haven't had a cat one yet.
Dogs are just rodeoed.
Yeah.
Now, I like, John, your point is, let's put it off for two weeks, and see what kind of feedback we get, I like your program, Monica, I mean, I honestly do.
Do you want, do you think, Logan, that's, at least we'd then have an, we'd have an impact, we might have a bit of our.
No, of course, again, again, I'm, I'm a hundred percent advocate for this, again, I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way, so people aren't punished by participating. Or, uh, we, we start a pilot program just to be, uh, disintegrated due to, uh, a couple, uh, neighbors that are, got itchy fingers on their phone.
What do you wanna, what do you wanna do, jump in right now?
I think from my perspective, I, I'll, I'll echo Logan's sentiments, I'm in support of whatever we can do to control the cat population. I have a big concern that part of the, the trap and release philosophy is, you're gonna feed them or care for them afterwards.
Right.
That contradicts our, our ordinance, I think we're gonna need to deal with that.
And, and just, the, the, we're not in a real big hurry, now is not a great time to do this anyway, so, you know, but I appreciate your time tonight, and.
So, so do you want more than two weeks? I mean, I, I don't know, do you think you'd have a significant response in two weeks to come back with more data, or do you want longer than that? Knowing that we're in January now, and I don't see a whole lot of cats lingering around outside my backyard.
Do, well, how about we do this?
One day going break out of my pond the other day.
It wasn't frozen?
Yeah, no, you could see right, all the frozen, put, water come out of the water.
Catching a fish.
That's been in the habit of Greg, I say, but.
Can we do this, can we expedite things for you, can we ask, you know, the, the, the media to possibly reach out to your group? And, and, and let them know concerns, maybe not the city.
Mm-hmm, sure.
But your group, and, and, and kind of get a feel for the, the, the brevity of the, of the issue, and and, and on our end, maybe we can start looking into options, and other, other towns outside of central Iowa that maybe face this and use this, and um, we can be prepared in a couple of weeks to, we'd be a better answer. But you're right, I, I believe, a, a lot of what you said there, Monica, like, I hate having ordinances that aren't enforceable. I, I hate putting more words into a law that just makes it more complex and, and convoluted. Um, but I also don't wanna hinder, uh, any progress you can make, um, in the meantime, so hopefully, we can have a, a compromise that can get you guys going in the next couple of months, and get us going on, on reworking something, if that's what we see fit.
Mm-hmm, and actually, and to answer your question, Daniel, a month would probably be better than two weeks.
Yeah.
For me, and, and just some things that I probably need to follow up on that I'm not aware of, I, I think stray cats now go to the vet clinic. Do they handle that for the city?
That's what I was asking the chief, so what, what is our agreement with the vets, vet department, when we bring in a stray animal?
It, I mean, if it's a cat or a dog, I mean, they'll take them just as a stray, and so, I mean, if, if they're obviously limited by capacity by number of kennels out there, so, I mean, if they're not picked up or claimed, just like any other animal, they're unfortunately euthanized, or or try to adopt it out if they, if they can.
Is there any fees tied to that?
Oh, yeah.
And who, will those fees get passed on to the taxpayer, to a person?
At least the time we end up.
Yeah, we don't, we, we.
Unless it's claimed, if it's claimed day after day.
Yeah, and, and most.
Well, how many times do, how many times do we get?
Or we get, but then we have to try to collect them, I guess.
But that's the idea by the taxpayer, it comes into our.
Yeah, they send us a bill.
We, we lose money at it, how much, it's just, you know, depends on how many animals we.
Where programs like this could hopefully lessen.
So you might, when you microchip, do you microchip into you, or do you microchip into the person who's feeding them? Because that's, I mean, that's what they do, is they check the microchip to see whose animal it is.
Right, right, um, with the TNR program, we would, the microchip would be registered to our organization, and we would have a record of where that cat was TNR'd. Um, we could potentially register it to the caregiver's name, that's always an option as well, um, you know, quite frankly, just more information, a lot of communities that allow for TNR, if a cat is not, if a cat is ear tipped, animal control will not take it.
Okay.
Um, you know, because it's part of a TNR program, and, and that's a lot of the reason is to bring their costs down. They say, no, it needs to go back where it was, or they use the microchip to find out where it originated.
And get it out quickly.
And get it out, you know, as long as it's not sick or injured. Um, and, and that's, you know, another, my experience with Webster City Vet Clinic, I don't have numbers, but I know that they're full of cats pretty much all the time, and I think when they are full and somebody calls, they tell them, no, we can't take them. And then that cat is still out in the community, potentially creating more.
Yeah, s- s- some of the examples for communities I surveyed and got responses back for, there is a cost inherent to the city, and that ranges anywhere from forty dollars for a cat for, I think, West Centerville, to seventy dollars per cat for Washington, and so there is a cost, and with them being feral or stray cats, we're never gonna recoup that, so.
It would be helpful, too, if you are able to find some samples of ordinances.
And we can too, I mean, I, that's, I'll have those.
We research it, if we, if you, we're gonna make it.
We used to do it.
Sure, yeah, no, I'd be happy to help, however, if you, did you get a packet?
I, I passed it on to the.
Okay.
I'll give mine.
Okay. Okay, my business card or our card is on there, you can call me anytime or.
Well, that's a good start, so.
Well, it needs to be an opportunity for us up in the next town hall meeting.
Yeah.
To see if there's a pain point on that and people have real concerns, I mean, if they show up to the meeting at least. They have the opportunity to express themselves. And so I guess that's something to ever pass from the next town hall meeting also.
So you said, you said a month, right?
Yes, one, two weeks is kinda short for me.
And that's the thing, it'll be busy anyway.
Yeah.
And then we get the town hall meeting between now and then.
Well, the town hall meeting.
So would you want, when is the town, would you want me to be at that?
Someone should be there.
Okay.
So if we do get, if we do get two minutes, um, twenty second, do we, do we get our time set?
Twenty second, seven. Twenty second, we can be at the middle school, there are some activities going on. Um, there's junior high basketball game, should be done by six, but then there's volleyball teams that practice. In both gyms from six to eight, so there could be some people coming and going on the twenty second.
I might join in.
Encourage him to stay.
So.
So the twenty seconds.
Twenty second, and that's at, and middle, what time?
At seven.
Seven.
Seven P M, okay.
So if somebody could be there, it'd be good.
Sure.
Yeah, cause in case there's a lot of questions.
Thank you very much.
Good, Kim, thank you.
Item three is a second reading of opposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, Iowa. Nineteen ninety-six by amending paragraph one and paragraph three, chapter sixty-nine. Section zero eight pertaining to no parking zones.
I can cover it unless you really wanna hear him talk. Uh, this pertains to Bank Street from um Beach Street to West Avenue, essentially along the high school route. Um, currently, the signs of the ordinance does not provide or allow for parking on the south side of the street. But does on the si- on the north side, um, and when you have vehicles uh on a major event, it makes it very difficult for. Um, larger vehicles, especially public safety vehicles, to get down that street. This ordinance change would switch it so that uh parking would be allowed on the south side, uh but not the north side. Um, part of the logic also is that most people would walk into the high school. Uh, for events or or school, whatever the case would be, would walk on the south side trying to get to the high school. Um, and encourage parking on the south side versus the north side, thus alleviating people crossing mid-street um outside the intersections.
It's gonna make people have to park a long ways away to be legal, but I think it's a good thing.
Does the city have any feedback on this initial proposal?
I have not heard anything, I don't know if, and I think it was originally a resident that brought this up to our attention, if I'm not mistaken.
Leave some education to you when you do those first for law games, cause you're still gonna, people not paying any attention.
To the signs, yeah, they'd be just parking.
Well, actually, if, when it's passed and and published, it'll be in effect. So it could be within the next month or two, you're gonna run into. Basketball, wrestling, softball, track.
Well, slowly, slowly, tread lightly in the beginning.
I just parked illegally, for the, the last time I'll be able to park on that side of the road.
You can pass illegally, we're happy to take your money.
If you do park today, just let us know, we'll make sure the officer agrees with you.
Uh, just make sure they book you.
Yeah, he knew that.
Cuffed and stuffed.
All right. Okay, we'll call for a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign.
Can we uh wave for third reading?
You wanna call for a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. So we'll pass and adopt.
Move to pass and adopt.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion approved. Item four on the agenda is a resolution accepting work authorizing final payment of twelve thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-three cents. And release, release the retainage of six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents in thirty days to tile pro. The tile pros of Webster City, Iowa, for completion of the contract for the Millards Lane drainage project.
This is for completion of the Millards Lane drainage project uh towards the southern end of the of Millards Lane, closer to Br- Briggs Woods. Um, the work has been completed, uh the reconciliation of three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents plus the retainage of. Six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Um, the reconciliation or the added amount was just due to some variation on the volumes that were initially bid. And the final amounts that were, that were completed, when the project was completed. Seating was, I think, was the biggest one, the biggest difference. A couple of the other items actually were less than what were bid out, but but seating was the. The higher amounts, almost doubled, um, but the overall amount difference, um, as I said, was only about three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion approved. Item five is a motion approving a payment of security cameras which were installed at City Hall.
Uh, we originally, I'm sorry, we originally had discussed this early, earlier on in the year for uh updating some of the security components of City Hall. We had a security system at the time, a camera system at the time, I should say. Um, the the recorder looked like an o- o- oversized VCR, that tells you how big and how old the system was. Couple of the cameras was starting to uh show wear and tear and not functioning as they used to, so we went out and got bids uh for replacing the camera system. Aster Security originally came in lower, um, and being under the ten thousand dollar mark, uh we went ahead and moved forward to approve them. Um, installing the cameras. Once they were here, we realized that the one camera outside the police station uh was overlooked. Um, and we went ahead and just told them to install it so that we don't have to incur additional cost for them coming back and install it and run wire. Um, that overage exceeded the ten thousand dollar mark, and so we're requesting approval um to uh permit the final payment. Um, in excess of the original bid amount, the total would be ten thousand three hundred forty dollars. We did get bids from other vendors. R C Systems was the next um lowest quote at eleven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. A D T, they provide an initial lower install quote of four thousand four hundred eighty, um, but their, their bid included a. Monthly service charges of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents.
On this security camera, does that just take care of the exterior perimeters or?
No, we actually, we actually added some, well, we removed, because of the newer cameras, we were able to uh cover the. The outside quad on on the west side with just one camera, a hundred and ten degree view. Uh, we also added additional cameras, one in, one camera that cov- covers both lobbies. Here on this, the utility office and city manager's office, another one that covers the P D hallway. And we also added another one, um, there there's people that coming in and out from the the southern door on the P D hallway. So those additional cameras put in there to cover specifically that, that hallway as well.
It's quite small, you see it out there? Move to. Hey, little Tony. I had a listen to you talking to him.
Big brother.
So they told me after I was out there talking.
Brian, move to approve.
All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion approved. Next section is E, reports and recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. We don't really have any, do we?
Yeah, the youth advisory commission will be meeting again this month on the twenty-first at seven P M at Fuller Hall. And right now, really the biggest thing they work on is their upcoming frothing tournament. Due sometime this summer.
January twenty-first, uh, what night?
At seven P M, yeah.
No below zero frothing tournament?
Only that works.
Four, a collection, be a good idea right now.
Yeah, go for that. I'll 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 jump in right after you.
And John, and John's pond?
Just to get, the hole's getting smaller. I don't know if the cat fell in or what, but there was, there was frozen spots where it walked out and it was like. We're talking about cats and everyone, I walked out the next morning and there's the footprints. Yeah, but it wasn't frozen, so.
The the city's ice skinny rink will open up this week. We're still looking, we're in need of volunteers that can man the warming shelter um during the week, so, anyone out there that's interested.
Chuck, you're living down there practically anyway, aren't you?
I think we're gonna be doing a lot of evenings.
And you wanted the town hall meeting for the twenty-second then, so I can verify that with the school tomorrow?
Yes.
Before I forget, cause I know, I don't know if it's out there, I think it is, but uh Friday morning, people with uh. Real Christmas trees, that are going to be disposing them outside the curb pickup is this Friday. No bags, ornaments or Christmas lights on them.
Presents will be acceptable.
Or tree stands. That's illegal now.
Yeah, I know, but presents is okay. All right. All right, oh, city, county updates, how the councils?
Yeah, uh, so the Mary Ann's one we talked about in the past, that one was finally completed first December seventh, so the first week of December, so it's gonna be on that. The first payment back to the city's not due until January fifteenth, I remember, right? Um, so that one's good, uh, the other ones, we've sold uh one of the lots in Burke Creek, third edition to David Luke. And then we're also in the process of selling the final two lots in the third edition. Hopefully, uh, this month, they will have those two sold, uh, or working with them to get those ones done, so the only lots we have remaining would then obviously be the fifth and sixth edition, so. It's good to push people out that way, I guess. And uh, the other one that's, you've probably noticed, is this new social media Facebook page for the city. Daniel and I have been working on it. Daniel, majority of the time, in working on social media policy, just to make sure that what we're putting out there. Um, the the consequences as far as open records requests and what becomes public and whatnot. We wanted to make sure we had a really good policy in place so that uh other departments start to also use social media that it's done in an appropriate and effective way, so. And that, it's been a good year.
Yeah. So you did two of the years, so. Been cold.
Yes, two thousand seventeen was a good year.
It's been freezing cold all year. All right, call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, for adjourn.